I want to get started. The call to order the City of San Carlos Successor Agency to the redevelopment Agency Housing Authority regular meeting of November 26, 2018. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Changes to the order of the agenda. Does anyone have any? I was thinking maybe we should move, just in case, there are probably some people here, if we moved eight C to, and just swapped it with eight B. Is that all right? Just move, go A, C, B, is that okay?
All right.
We'll do that, because I think there are some people that are here for A, possibly too. So I'm looking at, yes, at least a couple of people. All right. So we'll make that change. Report from closed session, Mr. Rubens.
There's no report tonight from closed session, although you have a related item on the open session tonight.
Okay. And presentations. First is welcome San Carlos School District Superintendent Michelle Harmeyer to San Carlos and receive an update on the school district. So Michelle, you want to come up? Thank you. You have two minutes, Michelle. Kidding, 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 Michelle, kidding.
Thank you, Mayor Grisilli.
Take as much time as you need.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council members, for inviting me today. And Mr. Maltby, nice to see you again. Thank you so much for having me. I came tonight not just to introduce myself, but also give a little bit of a district update, too. Hope that's okay with you. I'll zoom through a few different items. But I did want to just start off by saying thank you, because it's just nice for me to come to a city and start off with a good partnership with my city partners. And I wanted you to notice my pin, because I am a graduate of the Citizens Academy. I got lucky when we first moved in here. My husband, Brian, who's here, wanted to find a volunteer opportunity. He went online, he found this program and signed up. And he said, by the way, you're going to. So it worked. That was just what I wanted to do for eight Wednesdays in a row when I first got here. But I'm really glad I did, because I got to meet everybody and got to know the city very well. So thank you for that, and thank you for having this program. Just a little bit of background about myself, just so you get to know me as an educator. This is my 26th year in public education. I've been in kindergarten through eighth grade, all through, in several different districts. Working backwards, I just came from Anaheim Elementary School District, a very large urban district with 18,000 kids. Kindergarten through sixth grade, in the happiest place on earth. Wasn't so happy, though, for everybody, but it was a very good experience to really work in an urban setting, with the challenges that they serve there. And what a wonderful education program it was, so I had a great learning opportunity there. Prior to that, I was right here in San Mateo Foster City for a few years. I was a Director of Human Resources and worked under Cindy Sims and then Joan Rosas, the superintendent there. Prior to that, I was in Marin for a year, just as a, one year as a principal, as I was working in my doctoral program before I got recruited to San Mateo Foster City. But prior to that, I spent 20 years in Roseville. And Roseville is in Placer County, just east of Sacramento, very fast-growing area in Northern California, where the city of Roseville had a model master plan since the early '80s and built its parks and schools all together in partnership. So I was able to be part of the opening of three schools, one as a teacher, one as an assistant principal, one as a principal, and each time partnering with the city as we opened a park adjacent to us, which also, of course, had adventure club, daycare, and other partnering amenities and facility use agreements. So I would like to say I grew up in Roseville as an educator and really saw a great model of a city working closely with the several school districts that were within the city bounds. I also just want to give you a little background, a little introduction to my team. You may be aware, but just in case you're not, we had a large change in leadership this past year in the school district. Superintendent Baker relocated into Cupertino. By the end of the school year, we had five out of eight principals' positions that needed to be replaced, and our whole cabinet team essentially was a new cabinet team. So that's a very big change in such a small school district. But I wanted to introduce my team to you, because they're new in the community as well. Hans Barber, he is our Assistant Superintendent, came from the Santa Clara area, also in Cupertino, and oversees our education services and our human resources departments. Jennifer Smith, our Director of Human Resources, has worked 10 years at the County Office of Education under Sue Weiser as her Assistant in Human Resources, so comes with a lot of experience. Mila Milligan is serving as our CBO. She was our Director of Finance for the last several years, after coming from Burlingame, and took over for Robert Porter, who retired as our Chief Operating Official. And that's Brian Olden, my husband, sitting next to them. He's a volunteer. But I did want you to get to know our team, since we all are new, so you have some familiarity with all of us. A few little updates for you. We just had our academic update with our school board on October 18. And there are lots of different ways to measure the success of a school district, but one of the things that we know is important are the state test scores that come out every year. And I'm proud to report that we are continuing to grow and perform at a high level, but we are one of the highest-performing districts in California and also here in the peninsula area. So we are a very high-achieving school district, very proud of that. Not only are we serving the academic needs of our students, but we really focus on their social, emotional well-being, physical fitness, arts, STEM, and all of those related activities. So we really are focusing on the whole child, but we're also very proud that we are achieving very high levels for our area. And it makes a difference when parents are looking for schools and neighborhoods and where they want to live. It's one of the first things they do, is to take a look at that data. Another update is our building project. We had a general obligation bond, a couple of them, as you're aware of, probably in the last several years. But we just completed our bond work that started 2013, and that was Measure 8. So we completely remodeled Central Middle School and added a new school on its campus called Arroyo. That's the fourth and fifth school, sitting on the campus. Tierra Linda had lots of upgrades and improvements to it. The Charter Learning Center is now complete. They have their own campus on the facility of Tierra Linda, and it's a really interesting, innovative model using shipping containers, which did cause a little bit of a delay, but at the same time, it's a beautiful model of an interesting modular program. And our fifth graders are just about ready, our fourth and fifth graders are just about ready to open the new Mariposa School on that site also. So right now, our fifth graders are there. The fourth graders will move over next year from Arundel and Heather, and then we'll have our eighth school opened up next year, and that's Mariposa School. They're not official yet, but we do have a principal, and it is called Mariposa, but they'll have a new CDE number, and they'll be official next year. During that time, the district office was also relocated down to Industrial and Howard, so that was part of that bond work and giving the central office a home base-to-be. And also, the last piece are elementary schools. They had some work done to them during the early stages of the bond work, but they are part of Phase 2 of the facility modernization. So we have four schools that need a lot of infrastructure work, but that'll be at a later time. So right now, what are we doing with facilities? We're really just focusing on deferred maintenance for those schools that are aging and need plumbing and electrical and HVAC and all of those things, and just trying to keep them patched up right now until we can move forward with the next modernization phase, when that does come. We're exploring future options for maybe a possible bond in the future to take care of those modernization needs. But we're also exploring options to finish the last piece of construction for the Mariposa School. We'll be able to open up the school next year, but it didn't completely finish. We still have a large learning commons building and some refresh to do on that site, so we're looking at some funding options to finish off that project. Our Smarti After-School Program, we offer lots of options for families outside of the regular school day. And there's three things that we do with our enterprise program. It's called Smarti, and we have a preschool program, which is a paid program, not part of the school district. We expanded that program. We have two preschool classes at all for elementary schools now. We have eight classes, and that's providing a very much-needed service for our community to have preschools conveniently located. And we're looking to expand that program, hopefully a couple more classes next year. We also have after-school enrichment classes through Smarti. And this year, we have asked an outside company, Kids2Pros, to manage all of those enrichment classes. So there are lots of different choices that people can take an hour or two hours after school. And for a lot of people, that's the only care that they really need, so they sign up for those kinds of classes. And we also have our Smarti After-School and Before-School Care. And we call that our Extended Day Care. So there's some morning and afternoon supervision and care. We're having a lot of challenges with that program because of our labor shortage, and we also struggle with facility space. So we are engaging our community in some discussions about that program as we make some plans for next year to see how we might modify it or change it a little bit so we can try to accommodate as many people as we can. But at the same time, we want a high-quality program that's safe for students as well. And lastly, we have a Budget Advisory Committee that we're hosting this year for the first time in a while. I think we've had to have some budget discussions. Our state funding has leveled off. And in past years, we've been growing as a district, and when you grow, the money comes with kids, and you are in a good spot as far as your budget goes. And also, the state was recovering from the recession, and those funds were starting to come in. But we have now leveled off. So our income is not going to increase. However, our expenses are increasing. We have increased pension costs, as I think you might be dealing with here, too, that are really encroaching into our general fund. So though we're not getting more funding, it's like a budget cut, because our bills are increasing, our expenses are increasing. And at the same time, we had 100 children not show up this year. That did not come through the door as anticipated. Happened to many of us around the Bay Area, the high cost of living, we feel, is the main cause of having a lot of people leave this area that can no longer afford to live in this region. So with 100 students leaving, we are now going to experience a reduction in revenue. So we're going to have to just make some adjustments and do a little belt tightening. And we're using this Budget Advisory Committee as a process to essentially develop our budget in front of the community, of a diverse set of stakeholders, teachers, administrators, parents. And we've even asked a couple of the members of Mr. Maltby's team to join us, to see if we can partner in unique ways, too. So we'll be essentially building our budget all throughout the school year. So those are the updates. I didn't know if you had any questions for me.
Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate that. Great introduction. Good seeing you again. The only question I have, and it's probably more like indicating something I'd be interested in being kept apprised by your team, is as experience and insight grows as to why the enrollment's declining, I know you, I suspect what you said is probably the answer, but I would love to know that, because that actually has implications for civic policy as well on a lot of levels. And so I remember when you first mentioned that to me, I think it was, you know, some weeks ago when we met, I was like, hmm, okay, that's definitely something worth following up on. So I would love to be kept in the loop on that.
We will do that. It's an important concern for us, too, because we are projecting, we need to make sure that we have room, because there's a little dip. We know they're going to be coming, so we need to plan for that. But we'll definitely keep you up to date.
Michelle, thank you so much. Appreciate the information, also meeting the staff that you have, and again, welcome. Great to have you. The next item on our agenda is a presentation of a proclamation to Donna Beck upon her retirement for Healthy Cities Tutoring. Yeah, you have to come up, Donna. I'm not like Phil Donahue, where I'd walk into the audience and go like this, so, sorry. Is this on? Oh, it is. Yeah, great. So I've known Donna for, I guess, at least 13 years, if not longer. And Donna was, how can I say, mentoring Healthy Cities through the city. And then Donna wasn't mentoring Healthy Cities through the city, as we all had a difficult early part of the century. And the city had to make some very uncomfortable and very difficult cuts. But that didn't dissuade Donna, because she just stepped over to another side and made sure that Healthy Cities has grown exponentially, in my mind, in the past, I say, what is it, 10, 12 years? How many? Yes, 12 years. So I'm going to read a couple of these wherethes, but over the past 21 years, Donna Beck has guided the Healthy Cities Tutoring Program from inception as a city service into a thriving nonprofit organization with a commitment to ensure every child has the support necessary to achieve their full potential. Healthy Cities Tutoring has expanded to serving all nine schools in the San Carlos School District, plus four schools now in Redwood City. Can Belmont be next? I don't know. Whereas during her tenure, she oversaw all development of all aspects of the organization, including recruiting, training, and matching volunteer tutors with students. How many volunteers do you have now?
404.
404 volunteers, and how many students?
469.
469, unbelievable. I mean, just unbelievable how this has grown. I remember, it seemed like it was just in the hundreds, if that, when it started. But anyway. Coordinating tutoring services in each of the schools, fundraising, and leading the Board of Directors and Staff in creating an intergenerational, community-wide volunteer program. I know I'm not a volunteer, but I know many volunteers, and they range from teenagers all the way into people in their 80s, if not 90s, I remember. So it's a terrific organization. You know, whereas, 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 you know, so on and so on. People can read it, but the point being is Donna has given this city an amazing amount of time, effort, and support to help the young people of our schools. And as Michelle indicated, the great school district we have, part of that is this group, Healthy Cities, which helps these young people learn. So congratulations, Donna, very much, on your retirement and well-earned, so.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, council, and for this honor, much appreciated. And many of you in the audience have made it all possible. Leslie Loomis is here, who's the person who hired me back in December of 1996. We were much younger then. And it's just grown, as you've outlined, but because of a lot of people in this room who volunteered and stepped forward and helped me, the staff and the volunteers, and have all, the Board of Directors and the teachers and just everyone, it's just been a true community effort to make it all come together. So I'm really honored and touched to receive this and thank the council for being part of it, the city being part of it for so many years, and the school district. And we have many more children to reach, and I know we're going to continue doing that. So thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to receive an update on the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vetra Control District from Ross Graves, San Carlos Board of Trustees. Ross, what's happening to your audience here? No, seriously, if folks have to leave, please, please go ahead, Ross, before you start. We'll let them clear.
I'm used to it.
He's not carrying any mosquito virus. He doesn't have any of that. Okay, Ross, why don't you go ahead? Welcome, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to give you what I hope is a brief and periodic updates on the important work that the Mosquito and Vetra Control District is doing. I've been serving as San Carlos trustee for six months now, and after 25 years in the corporate life science field, I can tell you how impressed I am with the operation and management of the district, as well as the science-based approach that the district takes for all decision-making. I'd like to give the bulk of my five minutes to give the presentation to our Public Health, Education, and Outreach Officer, Megan Sabai.
Welcome, Megan.
Thank you so much for making time for us. I promised to be brief. The first thing that I want to talk about is the 2018 West Nile virus season. West Nile virus is a potentially very serious disease that's transmitted by mosquitoes. Statewide, there were 182 human cases and eight fatal cases here in California. I'm proud to report that here in San Mateo County, we had zero human cases. In fact, we only detected West Nile virus once over the summer in East Palo Alto, and we were able to quickly get that under control. The season has since ended. We don't expect to see any more West Nile virus in 2018. We don't expect to see any more until next spring, so we're pleased with that. In addition to our ongoing work in San Carlos as far as managing mosquitoes, we got about 200 calls from your residents during our last fiscal year. That's July 2017 through June 2018. About half of those were calls for yellow jacket wasps nests. We provide that removal free of charge. It costs about between $75 and $150 if you pay a pest control company. So residents are understandably very pleased to take advantage of that service. Mosquito calls were down, not just in San Carlos, but countywide due to us getting a new data management system that really improved our program last year. And requests related to rodents are also down considerably here in San Carlos. We've gotten a lot during the previous two years, but we think that residents are getting a better idea of how to deal with that, although roof rats are really an ongoing problem throughout the peninsula, just because of our environment. We've been doing a lot of rodent control work in this area. You know, we've been working both with the city and with individual residents. There are a lot of things that residents can do to help reduce the risk of having a rodent infestation in their home. The most important one is to work together with their neighbors. A rodent infestation isn't something that occurs at one household or on a single block. It's something that occurs community-wide, and it really requires a community-wide solution. So we're happy to do anything we can to help residents work together to make those changes, to make their properties a little bit less hospitable to rodents, and hopefully improve that situation some. We provide trainings, presentations, inspections, pretty much anything residents need to get
To see if we can partner in unique ways, too. So we'll be essentially building our budget all throughout the school year. So those are the updates. I didn't know if you had any questions for me.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate that. Great introduction. Good seeing you again. The only question I have, and it's probably more like indicating something I'd be interested in being kept apprised of by your team, is as experience and insight grows as to why the enrollment's declining, I know you, I suspect what you said is probably the answer, but I would love to know that because that actually has implications for civic policy as well on a lot of levels. And so I remember when you first mentioned that to me, I think it was, you know, some weeks ago when we met, I was like, hmm, okay, that's definitely something worth following up on. So I would love to be kept in the loop on that.
We will do that. It's an important concern for us, too, because we are projecting, we need to make sure that we have room, because there's a little dip. We know they're going to be coming, so we need to plan for that, but we'll definitely keep you up to date.
Michelle, thank you so much. Appreciate the information. Also, meeting the staff that you have, and again, welcome. Great to have you. The next item on our agenda is a presentation of proclamation to Donna Beck upon her retirement for Healthy Cities Tutoring. Yeah, you have to come up, Donna. I'm not like Phil Donahue where I'd walk into the audience and go like this, so, sorry. Is this on? Oh, it is. Yeah, great. So I've known Donna for, I guess, at least 13 years, if not longer, and Donna was, how can I say, mentoring Healthy Cities through the city. And then Donna wasn't mentoring Healthy Cities through the city, as we all had a difficult early part of the century, and the city had to make some very uncomfortable and very difficult cuts. But that didn't dissuade Donna, because she just stepped over to another side and made sure that Healthy Cities has grown exponentially, in my mind, in the past, I say, what is it, 10, 12 years? How many? Yes, 12 years. So I'm going to read a couple of these wherethes, but over the past 21 years, Donna Beck has guided the Healthy Cities Tutoring Program from inception as a city service into a thriving nonprofit organization with a commitment to ensure every child has the support necessary to achieve their full potential. Healthy Cities Tutoring has expanded to serving all nine schools in the San Carlos School District, plus four schools now in Redwood City. Can Belmont be next? I don't know. Whereas during her tenure, she oversaw all development of all aspects of the organization, including recruiting, training, and matching volunteer tutors with students. How many volunteers do you have now?
Four hundred and four.
Four hundred and four volunteers, and how many students?
Four hundred and sixty-nine.
Four hundred and sixty-nine. Unbelievable. I mean, just unbelievable how this just grown. I remember, it seemed like it was just in the hundreds, if that, when it started, but anyway. Coordinating tutoring services in each of the schools, fundraising, and leading the Board of Directors and Staff in creating an intergenerational, community-wide volunteer program. I know I'm not a volunteer, but I know many volunteers, and they range from teenagers all the way into people in their 80s, if not 90s, I remember. So it's a terrific organization. You know, whereas, 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 you know, so on and so on. People can read it, but the point being is Donna has given this city an amazing amount of time, effort, and support to help the young people of our schools. And as Michelle indicated, the great school district we have, part of that is this group, Healthy Cities, which helps these young people learn. So congratulations, Donna, very much on your retirement and well-earned, so.
Thank you, Council, and for this honor, much appreciated, and many of you in the audience have made it all possible. Leslie Loomis is here, who's the person who hired me back in December of 1996. We were much younger then, and it's just grown, as you've outlined, but because of a lot of people in this room who volunteered and stepped forward and helped me, the staff and the volunteers, and have all, the Board of Directors and the teachers and just everyone, it's just been a true community effort to make it all come together. So I'm really honored and touched to receive this and thank the Council for being part of it, the city being part of it for so many years, and the school district, and we have many more children to reach, and I know we're going to continue doing that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to receive an update on the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District from Ross Graves, San Carlos Board of Trustees. Ross, what's happening to your audience here? No, seriously, if folks have to leave, please, please go ahead, Ross, before you start. We'll let them clear.
I'm used to it.
He's not carrying any mosquito virus. He doesn't have any of that. Welcome, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to give you what I hope is a brief and periodic updates on the important work that the Mosquito and Vector Control District is doing. I've been serving as San Carlos trustee for six months now, and after 25 years in the corporate life science field, I can tell you how impressed I am with the operation and management of the district, as well as the science-based approach that the district takes for all decision-making. I'd like to give the bulk of my five minutes to give the presentation to our Public Health, Education, and Outreach Officer, Megan Sabai.
Thank you so much for making time for us. I promised to be brief. The first thing that I want to talk about is the 2018 West Nile virus season. West Nile virus is a potentially very serious disease that's transmitted by mosquitoes. Statewide, there were 182 human cases and eight fatal cases here in California. I'm proud to report that here in San Mateo County, we had zero human cases. In fact, we only detected West Nile virus once over the summer in East Palo Alto, and we were able to quickly get that under control. The season has since ended. We don't expect to see any more West Nile virus in 2018. We don't expect to see any more until next spring, so we're pleased with that. In addition to our ongoing work in San Carlos as far as managing mosquitoes, we got about 200 calls from your residents during our last fiscal year. That's July 2017 through June 2018. About half of those were calls for yellow jacket wasps nests. We provide that removal free of charge. It costs about between $75 and $150 if you pay a pest control company, so residents are understandably very pleased to take advantage of that service. Mosquito calls were down, not just in San Carlos, but countywide, due to us getting a new data management system that really improved our program last year. And requests related to rodents are also down considerably here in San Carlos. We'd gotten a lot during the previous two years, but we think that residents are getting a better idea how to deal with that, although roof rats are really an ongoing problem throughout the peninsula, just because of our environment. We've been doing a lot of rodent control work in this area. You know, we've been working both with the city and with individual residents. There are a lot of things that residents can do to help reduce the risk of having a rodent infestation in their home. The most important one is to work together with their neighbors. A rodent infestation isn't something that occurs at one household or on a single block. It's something that occurs community-wide, and it really requires a community-wide solution. So we're happy to do anything we can to help residents work together to make those changes, to make their properties a little bit less hospitable to rodents, and hopefully improve that situation some. We provide trainings, presentations, inspections, pretty much anything residents need to get that under control. And the final thing I want to make sure everyone is aware of is that, unlike most of the United States, we have our major tick season in winter here in San Mateo County. These are the numbers from last year, and I have this circled in red so that no one mistakes this for 140% or 14%. It's 1.4%. We have a less than 2% infection prevalence of the bacteria that cause Lyme disease in adult deer ticks collected here in San Mateo County. I know that under 2% does sound like low risk, and compared to a lot of places, it is, but low risk does not mean no risk. So we'd like to encourage you and everyone in this area to take precautions if you're going to be spending time outside. And finally, I wanted to make sure everyone understands how they can request any of these services from us. We have a website, they can give us a call, they can email. We're happy to help any resident of the county, any of our cities. They can be homeowners or tenants, it doesn't matter, and we can even take requests anonymously. If there's something that someone sees that they think might need attention, we're happy to take a report and someone else to look at it.
Great. Thank you very much for the report. I have a couple of questions, I guess. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Nice presentation. Just two questions. One is, in terms of risk exposure to the pests, what's the impact of climate change anticipated to be?
There was actually a new report released recently. What we're hearing is that climate change is going to potentially increase the risk of vector-borne disease in the United States through warmer temperatures and the expansion of the range of some of these disease vectors, including ticks and mosquitoes. So that's a major concern for us here in San Mateo County. Warming weather could potentially reduce, increase our odds of having invasive 80s egypti mosquitoes, which were seen in Menlo Park in 2013 through 2015, and that's something we're very, very concerned about.
So key takeaway is one should not anticipate that the future will be like the past?
That is absolutely correct.
Second question probably is more of a Jeff question, or certainly a staff question. And I just am curious, on our city website, how straightforward is it for residents who perhaps have, and they may not know they should be contacting the agency, to go from, hey, I have an issue with rats, mosquitoes, whatever, to get linked through to where they're supposed to go?
I'd have to take a look. I don't believe I've ever actually had occasion to go on to that particular webpage on our city site.
For what it's worth, I know that everything falls in this category, but given the nature of the risks here, it might be worth making that, making sure it's reasonably straightforward.
We'll check it out.
We'd be happy to talk with your webmaster or your outreach staff, collaborate. We'd love that. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ross, for serving. Appreciate it, okay? Thanks a lot. All right, the next item is public comment. This is for items, persons wishing to speak on items not on the current agenda. Usually, each speaker is limited to two minutes. I have one card. John, do you want to talk on this area? John Hoffman?
John Hoffman, resident on Crestview Drive. I've appeared before you before, and this is one more effort to impose a two-term limit. The U.S. Constitution has been changed to prevent the president from running for more than two terms. The people of California wisely made that same determination for their Congress, for the Assembly and for the Senate, as well as the governor. All of the commissions that you charge are limited to two terms. I think it's well beyond time that the Council take that in hand and limit themselves as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Sean. It's the only card I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on items not on the posted agenda? Okay, we'll move on then to item seven, which is consent calendar. Consent calendar items are usually formulated in one motion, so do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through L and Item M, adopting ordinance number 1538, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending ordinance 1394, amending the development agreement between the City of San Carlos and the Palo Alto Medical Foundation for Healthcare, Research, and Education relating to the development of property at 301 Industrial Road, APNs 046-051-020 and 046-051-070, to extend the vesting period for 10 years.
Is there a second? I second. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we vote, there was one item I wanted to pull off and deal with separately is 7E. I believe it is the contract for planning.
All right. So, Mr. Olbert, would you amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion to remove Item 7E.
All right. Motion, is there a second? I second. Okay, motion and second for the consent calendar, A through D and F through M. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli.
Yes. All right, why don't you, why don't we take this now? Go ahead, Matt, if you have a question or...
Yeah, the question I have is, what's the overall plan here with the contract? Because we've extended it and added to it and so forth.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman?
So I believe last week or the week before, the RFP was put out, so we'll be going through a full RFP process for the Council to be able to consider. You know, it'll close in a month or so for the response period, then we'll evaluate, present to the City Council, and they can select the next vendor of that particular service. So this is just a fixed several months to close the gap, so we don't lose planning coverage.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, could I entertain a motion for 7E, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Item 7E.
I second. All right, moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli.
Yes. All right. Moving on, 8A, new business, consideration of adopting a resolution amending the dog park hours and improving additional off-leash dog locations. Ms. Newby?
Good evening, Mayor Griselli, Councilmembers, and members of the public. Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. I will begin tonight by providing background information on the pilot off-leash program which began in 2012. Two fields, Flanagan and Stadium, were identified for the pilot program to allow dogs to run off-leash. The program limited the times of day in which this was permitted, and the times throughout the year fluctuated depending on school breaks and the sports which were scheduled on the fields throughout the year. While the program was well-received by the dog community, there were challenges that came with integrating off-leash dogs on existing and scheduled sports fields and the shared use with sports organizations and other recreation programming. Sports groups had concerns over the feces that remained on the fields within the playing area of the kids. Our park maintenance staff had to address the field conditions in the concentrated areas where dogs were allowed to be off-leash. The program ran for several years before terminating in 2014. Following the termination of the program, several other park locations were considered for an off-leash dog park, including Upper Arguello, which is a flat area above the park near what's referred to as the rocks; Lower Vista, a flat area of the park below the landscaped spaces; North Crestview and Chilton, parks, both unimproved park land; and City Hall Park, which was identified as an underused park space in a centralized location. After much consideration, City Hall was chosen to be the site where dogs were allowed off-leash. Council approved funding for perimeter fencing and other minor modifications in early 2015. The modifications to City Hall Park were completed in the fall of 2015, and it opened to off-leash dogs. Since its opening, several park improvements have been made, which include removing approximately three inches of the existing topsoil and replacing with a decomposed granite and a dust stabilizer, relocating the entrance gate from Elm Street to San Carlos Avenue, installing a dog-and-human-friendly drinking fountain donated by the Parks and Recreation Foundation, and installing a few dog agility pieces, a project that involved two high school juniors from Sequoia High School who chose these improvements to fulfill their CAS project requirement, which is part of the International Baccalaureate Program. Current hours of the dog park are Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The park is closed every day for an hour for our maintenance contractors to complete scheduled work, as well as on Sundays, holidays, and during inclement weather. This past June, Council requested for the dog park hours and locations to be brought to the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission for discussion. The item was introduced and discussed at the August 8 meeting. Thirty community members attended, and many of them shared their comments and suggestions. Twenty-three of the people who commented asked for more hours at the dog park and/or more off-leash locations, preferably on a grass surface. Three of the people who commented requested not to increase the dog park hours. The item was brought back for further discussion among commissioners in September, and after a lengthy discussion, the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission recommends the following. First, to maintain the total weekly hours, so therefore reducing the hours on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and add hours on Sundays and holidays from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., so shifting those Saturday afternoons to Sunday and holiday afternoons. The Commission also recommended to allow dogs off-leash at Vista Park and Upper Arguello. Although North Crestview was also thoroughly considered for additional off-leash, as an additional off-leash location, excuse me, the Commission in the end did not include this site in their recommendation. And although many commenters requested more locations and more hours throughout the week to meet the needs of a growing community and to be more compatible with schedules of working individuals and families, the Commission chose to spread out the hours, the same number of hours, over the course of seven days as opposed to the six days. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Newby. Mr. Collins?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, I have one sort of general question, which is, does the City Council need to set the hours for the parks? It's based on the observation that, like, every time we want to make a one-hour adjustment or add more hours or remove hours, it seems like it's, you know, a multi-month process. Is there an option where we delegate that responsibility to staff, or we delegate it to the Park and Rec Commission? I don't know if this is also a question for Greg, maybe, but is this the case with all sort of hours of public facilities, that they always have to have a hearing before the City Council?
They don't. I think this particular park, and my understanding is that we've, at the staff level, decided that it was appropriate for the Council to make the decision on this after the review of the Commission, but technically, under the code, the Park and Rec Director has broad authority over the parks and the use of the parks.
So is it safe to say that, under current law, the Park and Rec Director can change the hours without the City Council weighing in on that?
Yes.
I guess I would, well, we can talk about it more under the discussion time, but it seems to me that giving the staff the flexibility to work with the community and make changes and experiment and see what works best might be the wise thing to do. One last question is, can you help me understand the logic of shifting from 9:00 to 1:00 on Saturday and then 1:00 to 5:00 on Sunday? Is there any concern that that would be disruptive to people who today go to the park on Saturday afternoons? And is there any reason why you don't have sort of a consistent schedule on the weekends so that people know, hey, if I'm taking my dog on the weekends, I know when the park is open? It seems potentially to be disruptive and confusing.
From the start of the conversation with the Commission, they all agreed that they wanted to remain the total aggregate hours within the week, and so they added up the hours, the current hours, and then, in the end, their change was to take four hours from Saturday and add them on to Sunday. From the public that came out to comment requesting additional locations and additional hours throughout the week to accommodate really busy schedules, I could see how taking four hours off of a Saturday could affect people's weekly or weekend routine of taking their dogs to the park in the afternoon if they have other morning commitments. And the Commission did want it to just balance the availability on the weekend of a morning time and an afternoon time, and they split it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Amy. I have several questions. First off, how well does the process of closing the dog parks work on any given day? I'm sort of probably thinking mostly on Saturdays currently. Does staff ever have a problem with people not wishing to leave the park, and so therefore having to exert some kind of greater level of suasion to get them to go, or what?
Occasionally, and I've heard from neighbors maybe once or twice in the last six months, maybe year, that there have been people in the park when it is closed. In terms of the routine, the gates are unlocked and locked by our maintenance contractors. If we were to add Sunday hours, we would have to look at that, because we don't have any maintenance workers on schedule on Sundays, so we'd have to look at our procedure and modify it. And I'm not aware of any incidents between a contractor or an employee getting into any verbal disagreement with the park user.
Okay. I appreciate that. The reason I ask, by the way, was I am a little concerned about the point Cameron was raising as well, about having inconsistent hours on Saturday and Sunday, and particularly when they're sort of a change, and I could sort of see somebody showing up, you know, on Saturday at 1:00 p.m. saying, "The park's closed," and people are like, "What?" And, you know, what does the person, does the staff person then have to escort them out, or what? So I'm a little leery about that. Another question I have is at Arguello. Arguello, unlike Vista Park, has a combination of non-field playing areas and field-playing areas. How are we going to keep, if we sort of say, "Well, there's an off-leash area up here," how are we going to keep people from creating the same kind of problems that we had when we allowed the dogs off-leash at Burton, for example? How are you going to keep them from going there?
That's a concern that I've already had, and just kind of brainstorming signage that we could include on the lower field of Arguello, making it very clear that this is not the off-leash location. And if you're familiar with the two, the field area and playground and the upper area where I'm talking about, it is very separate, and so there may be enough of a separation between the two areas that it won't be as of an issue. But we do have issues with many dogs off-leash in all of our parks.
Right. And my concern is that actually sort of authorizing partial use of the park for, I think, may very well just make it worse. Last question, I recall from when we set up the City Hall Dog Park, fairly quickly it became, there's a maintenance footprint to this in terms of keeping it clean and organized and whatnot, particularly, again, in the case of Arguello, but even with Vista, we're sort of expanding the footprint of places that are going to have to be taken care of. First off, do we have any sense of what the cost of that's likely to be? And second, kind of related to that, was there any consideration given to making the expansions, to some degree contingent upon the organized dog owner groups in San Carlos volunteering to help keep the areas clean?
So the locations that have been identified to allow off-leash dogs, they're more of an undeveloped area, and so where City Hall Park is more of a developed dog park, these are two open space, not open space, but undeveloped areas, which both do include the dog disposal bags at both sites already, and so maintenance will probably include just a daily monitor of that and cleaning up anything that is there. I don't have a cost of that, but I could get that number to you if you're interested. And in terms of the responsible dog owners group and the community, I'm not in contact with them a whole lot, but every once in a while, we do touch base, and when the topic came up of added hours and possible new locations, they do seem to be up for volunteering to kind of monitor the off-leash areas, and I don't know how that program would look down the road and how much of a commitment we could get from the general dog community, but that could be a possibility to explore.
The reason I ask the question about particularly Arguello with keeping things The reason I ask the question about particularly Arguello with keeping things clean is I tend to frequent the Polgus Ridge Dog Park, because it has a beautiful 20-acre off-leash area. It actually varies, but it, at certain times of the year, will have a significant number of dog poop bags left all over all the trails. And it's evolved a little bit towards the better in recent years, but it is a concern of mine because it's not all, I mean, to be perfectly frank, not all dog owners are as responsible as they ought to be.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Grocott.
Thank you. Couple of questions with the, both with Vista and Upper Arguello. Does that mean fencing is going to be introduced?
No.
Yeah, okay. And help me out with what you mean by Upper Arguello, because you're correct, it's pretty well-defined between the very upper part and the very lower part with the field, but there's a whole intermediary part with trails.
There's a flat area where Dartmouth and Northam meet. And so it's that area, and it has the rocks, and there's a picnic table. And so that would be the location that would be intended to authorize and allow off-leash dogs.
So how would that be made clear to the users? That, look, you're not supposed to take your dog down below on the trails. And really what I'm thinking of, Amy, is when you go from the very upper part, there's some trails that run down, and there is a rather level area with, because of the fire road, and people go there to pick blackberries in the summer and so forth. And that's before you drop down to the field. So there's this middle level, and I'm wondering how you would make it clear. I assume that's not off-leash, that area, is what?
Correct. And it would just be us communicating that with signage and other means of communication, and...
Okay. Somehow with signage to say that it's, or a map or something like that, okay. And then the last question I have is probably kind of prickly, maybe the city attorney might want to jump in on this. I'm concerned about liability because you've said now that there would be no fencing, which I can understand why you wouldn't want to put fencing. But on the other hand, if there is no fencing and a dog happens to run out into the street, and especially up on Vista, because people drive that, that's a pretty broad avenue there, and they go pretty quick, quicker than they ought to sometimes. So a dog running out into the street, or at both those parks, dogs interfering with wildlife. And, you know, obviously, there's the less serious thing like getting sprayed by a skunk, but there's other kind of wildlife, especially Vista, that is spotted up in that area on occasion, like mountain lions and, you know, that sort of thing. So would the city have any, open itself to any liability if something happened to someone's dog in one of these areas?
Well, I think there'd be a pretty low risk of liability because our code requires dog owners to maintain control of their animals, first of all. So they have to have voice command of their animals. So if they don't have a trained animal, then it would be on them in the sense that they did not have control and they were out of compliance with our code and our rules and regulations. As far as the wildlife, I think we accomplish limiting our liability on that by appropriately signing the areas. If there is a, I've seen, you know, at Polgus Ridge, they do have a warning sign at the trailheads that there are mountain lions and coyotes and other animals that could be dangerous to your pets. I think so we would follow that basic protocol, I think, for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amy, when we were deciding before where to put the dog park, which was, what, four years ago or so, wasn't Upper Arguello considered at the time?
Yes.
What was the resident feedback? Do you remember?
I don't.
I remember.
Okay. I didn't mean literally. And the same question for Vista Park. Did we not also consider that as well?
That was also considered.
And if we had adopted either one of those, would we have fenced either one of those areas? I mean, do you remember if that was in the plan? I know it's four years ago. I'm testing your memory, but...
No.
It wasn't? It wasn't? Okay. All right. All right, that's all I had for now.
So I had a couple of questions. Have we ever done a survey or have any knowledge of what hours are really being used at the dog park at City Hall? In other words, do we have any concept of the fact of, on Saturdays, you have huge amounts from 9:00 to 1:00, or none at all, or is there any...
I have not conducted any true-time number count on any day of the week.
All right. Now Vista Park, to me, is a fenced park, unless we're talking about something else that I'm not understanding. When I say finished, it's got a lot of, you know, it's finished. Whereas North Crestview, right now, it will be finished, I'm sure, in the future, but it's not finished at all. Why wouldn't we have North Crestview be the open area and Vista not? Because, like I said, Vista's more of a fenced thing where more stuff can sort of get, how can I put this, torn up if somebody goes in the wrong, or an animal goes in the wrong place?
Correct. So Vista has kind of the upper area where we do have native landscaping, and we did recently renovate that with the master gardeners. And then it drops off, and there's a lower area. And so the lower area is the intent of where off-leash dogs would be allowed. But you're correct in that Vista does have a part of the park that is considered developed and maintained, where North Crestview doesn't.
I mean, I have the same, it's the same conversation that was brought up just a minute ago about Arguello. I mean, people, not that people get confused, but they could be. But, and why was North Crestview, I mean, I understand it's going to be, when it's finished, I wouldn't recommend it, but right now, it's wide open up there. I don't understand why the, why folks didn't look at that more, or...
It is. And the commission discussed North Crestview significantly, and it was one of the more appropriate locations. And in the end, they just decided that with the recent master plan process, they wanted to leave that and look at these other two park locations.
Certainly in the future, and probably in the near future, next couple of years, it would be, probably have to be changed again because we'd close that part of it off because it's going to be fairly finished. But I'm concerned about, I guess I'm concerned about both Upper Arguello, I'm not as concerned, I'm not as familiar with Upper Arguello as I am with Vista. But just say the word Vista or say the word Arguello, I don't know if people are going to get the upper and lower, especially when they come off of Crestview, they just let the dog go, and then, you know, it may or may not make the bottom level. So anyway. Other questions? All right, we have some speaker cards, so thank you, Amy, and maybe some other questions that'll come up. So I'll call your name if you'd come up, please. Sandra Neff? We'd like to keep the comments to about two, three minutes at the most, please. Thank you.
Okay. I've been talking to all of you for about three years now, so we have another discussion. I sent you pretty much what I'm going to read about a month ago. So as you deliberate about the city dog park hours, I would like you to consider the following opportunities for dog owners in San Mateo County and beyond during Sunday and holidays. Number one, there are about 27 off-leash dog parks in San Mateo County, including Heather Park. Number two, there are several beaches along the San Mateo County coast that are available for off-leash dog activities. Number three, there are many miles of sidewalks and trails for strolls with leash dogs in San Mateo County. And number four, there are numerous off-leash dog parks in San Francisco and Santa Clara Counties. So you can see dog owners have many other locations to take their dogs when City Dog Hall Park is closed on Sunday and holidays. The condo owners and the renters at the various buildings surrounding the dog park have only Sundays and holidays totally free from barking dogs. Barking dogs make sounds that are different from the moving cars, children playing, or other passing sounds, and those barks are piercing. I certainly hope you vote to keep the park closed on Sunday and holidays so all the people who live around the City Hall Park can continue to have peace of mind on those days. And thank you very much, and thank you for the retiring council members for all your work that you've done.
Thank you for your comments. Brian Popantonio, and I apologize if I put the wrong emphasis on that.
Hi, I live at 633 Elm Street, just across the street, and I have a dog. Problem, I was here three years ago asking about the problem of off-leash dogs on this street because dogs jump out of the car and they're typically off-leash. I asked you to address that, and so far, nothing has happened, no random enforcement, which shouldn't have been hard because this is the police station, and I have not seen any additional signage. And it doesn't seem like you've really done anything to address that. And now by asking to change the hours to add Sunday, you're inviting other people from other communities even more so than before. So we're going to have more new people potentially coming to the park on Sundays that couldn't have joined. It's one thing to invite other people from other cities and, you know, have them do what they're going to do here, but now you're risking my safety because every time I go outside to walk my dog on leash, of course, he's attracted, there's other dogs that are attracted to him, they run up to me, I don't know what their intentions are, we don't, you know, he's gotten attacked by other dogs before, he can be kind of sketchy. I don't know what he's going to do. He has gotten attacked in this neighborhood before. So you really should be going back and addressing my original complaint that was three years old before adding additional hours. I think more study is needed. And really, that's all I'm asking for at this point, just that problem was a serious problem then, it's a serious problem now. So that's all I'm asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Karavonk?
Thank you, council members. Karavonk, 34-year resident of St. Carlos. Ron Collins and Bob Grisilli, I know well from the Planning Commission days. I'm here to talk about the off-leash Upper Arguello off-leash area. My husband and I live in the neighborhood, and this area is a very beautiful, natural place to walk, where one can commune with nature. And we are very uncomfortable of off-leash dogs. Some of us have been bitten by off-leash dogs in the past, and there are a lot of other residents who like to hike up there and commune with nature. So I don't think this is really an appropriate place to have off-leash dogs. Although it's a little different area, we did see a dog get attacked once. It was tied up to the fence where the owner was playing tennis at the park, I mean, at the school. And two large dogs attacked this poor little thing, and I don't know if it survived. So having off-leash dogs, I think it creates a dangerous and uncomfortable place for residents who like to get out and commune and get our daily exercise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Andrew Taylor?
Thank you, council. Andrew Taylor, Crestview Drive, resident and dog owner. I will echo the comments, I think, from both Mr. Olbert, you, Mr. Grisilli, and Mr. Grocott. In particular, as it concerns Vista Park, you get dogs, I don't care if they've got a voice command, they're under voice command. You mix wildlife with dogs and dogs on leash, and it's an accident waiting to happen. You've got the vehicles on Crestview. There are a lot of people that already use Vista, both for picnicking, because you have the picnic bench there for just sitting and enjoying it. And this is just going to be a bad mix. There's an off, I mean, that's our daily, twice a day with our dog is up from Crestview all the way up to Vista and back, and we do our loop. And there are a lot of dog owners, and everybody's on a leash. And I think something, you know, as Mr. Olbert alluded to with Polgus, is that's going to be a natural area, it gets heavy grass after the winter rains, people are never going to find the dog feces, it's going to become the same poop problem that exists at Polgus. And I just don't think it's the best of ideas. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Karen Bernstein?
Hi, I live on 136 Northam Avenue. I was one of the people who organized our community, whatever it was, four years ago, not to have a fenced-in dog park at Arguello because we thought it was inappropriate. I walk my dogs on leash just about every day in Arguello Canyon, and I can tell you that most people walk their dogs off-leash. Most of these same people claim that their dogs are under their control, and they are absolutely not. They say, you know, come Rover, come, come, come Rover, and Rover never comes. I do extensive obedience training with my dogs. They sit on my command, but I still put them on leash because there's lots of distractions, lots of wildlife, lots of other dogs. Arguello, this, the dirt park, as we call it in our neighborhood, is completely open, a curve in the road, it's just a totally inappropriate place for off-leash dogs under any circumstances. And the city concluded after the residents complained that it was also not an appropriate place for a fenced-in dog park. So now proposing that it be an off-leash place is just totally, totally inappropriate. It's unsafe for the dogs, it's unsafe for the people in the neighborhood. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Gillian Newsom? All right, no, I'm sorry, Gillian, sorry. Did I get the last name right?
Oh, absolutely. So Gillian Newsom, 20-year resident. I'm one of the people still mourning the loss of the original City Hall Park. I understood that the reason that the park was closed on Sundays was because we were giving a break to the people who lived around and heard the constant dog barking, and those people were really represented well the last time I came for this, and now they're not here, and it just feels like, well, they're not here, we'll just open the park on Sundays. So that does not seem fair. And also, the dog park has really impacted life around the park. You walk by it, like that path that cuts through so conveniently, and it really smells like dog pee. I love dogs, I think they're wonderful, I've had them my whole life, I've always put them on a leash and walked them, it's great exercise. I watch how people interact with their dogs in the park. They don't look at them, they just let the dogs run. It's like, I don't know what the obsession is with letting your dog run off. They're dogs, they're great, but they're dogs, and I think they can just be walked. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Gentlemen, what would you like to do? I'll start, since it's such a difficult, I mean, I still, as I said earlier, I voted for the dog park in City Hall Park. It's fenced in. If you don't have a fenced-in area, I mean, I, dogs, I don't have a dog, but that doesn't mean I haven't seen dogs. They run, and they might be controllable, they might not be controllable, but they run if they get a chance because they want to get out and exercise. Who wouldn't? And if there's no fence, I'm concerned up with Vista, as I said before, that Vista's going to be, they're going to be off the leash right off the get-go from Crestview. And then, again, as was mentioned about people that like to sit there or walk through the finished part of Vista Park, I think the same thing could be said for Arguello. So I'm not really leaning toward either one of those. For adding the hours, you know, there's never going to be enough hours to walk your dog, I guess, or to let your dog off, I would assume. And I'm not necessarily leaning to change the hours at all. It seems to work. Granted, there's always folks that would like more hours, but I could see what's going to happen here, and again, I'm not going to be here, but 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and then they're going to extend it to 5:00, and then Sunday, it's going to be seven days a week. And I do have some empathy for the folks who live there, I really do. I think it's still a great spot where we put the park, but I think the hours, to me at least, seem to be reasonable. But that's, I certainly would like to hear my colleagues' comments on all of this. So, Mr. Collins? comments on all of this, so, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we started this process, as I recall, it was because there were a lot of complaints at Burton, it was closed down for the off-leash hours, and then the discussion started around, where are we going to put a dog park? And we had several alternatives, three that I can think of were Vista Park, Arguello, and City Hall Park. I heard from residents in all three areas that, you know, Arguello was not appropriate, Vista was not appropriate, in fact, I heard that even City Hall area park was not appropriate. But just to sort of bring this back to how this new discussion started, I got a call in May, I guess, and a gentleman left me a message, and I called him back, and he said that he wanted more off-leash hours, but he wanted them at Burton Park. And I said, "Well, you know, I'm not necessarily in favor of that, but you're welcome to come to a council meeting and speak in public comment, because it's not on our agenda, and tell us how you feel." So he came, and he spoke, and somehow, his wish to have these off-leash hours returned to Burton to Park got turned into a discussion of reviewing the City Hall dog park hours and then adding new venues. So when I do a little bit of math, I always like to do math on everything, there's, this park is open 300 days a year, I mean, if you take out Sundays and you take out holidays, give or take 300-plus days a year, that's a lot of days. I got a lot of emails, particularly from some people in this room, about the impact of the dog park on their lives across the street, and I have to commend Amy, she worked tirelessly for months and months and months, addressing those issues with the neighbors, with the dog owners, and it finally got resolved, and I stopped getting emails from a lot of people, and to me, the situation has been fine, and I don't want the misinterpretation of one person's comment to cause us to go back and change everything. I think that if we start adding hours at Arguello or Vista, the people up there are going to think of that as a betrayal. We've kind of been there, you know, and done that, and I know that there are issues with, you know, dog waste and that sort of thing at this park, that's something I guess we just have to continue to work on. But I think, you know, in this town, we've got a lot of places for people to take their dogs, and personally, I'm not in favor of making any changes at all, I just assume, just leave it the way it is.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Bob. I have to admit, I was actually surprised when the council directed Parks and Rec to look into this, because I would never have anticipated that, given what we went through setting up the City Hall dog park, that the request would have been made. I'm fine with that, I think it's good, actually, occasionally, to review the rules of the road, so to speak, because the world constantly evolves, and it's good to check in on stuff. However, I do think that the process may have forgotten one of the really important lessons of having hours at Burton Park and then finding out that that didn't work, which is basically a separation of uses issue, okay, that it doesn't really, dogs and athletics, dogs and people wanting to sit around and enjoy the environment, at least off-leash dog areas, they're not really compatible uses, you have to separate them. And as my other colleagues have just finished saying, I'm actually not in favor of making any changes at all to what we have today, however, I don't necessarily have a problem if staff and Parks and Rec Commission want to go back and spend a little bit more time thinking about a different kind of proposal, but one which recognizes that really important lesson, which is separation of uses, and probably separation of uses requires there be fencing, okay? I suppose, you know, we could have probably left the fencing off around, oddly enough, the City Hall dog park, because there's no other use really that was, once we dedicated it to off-leash stuff, we did it mostly to protect the dogs from running into the streets. But anywhere that you have multiple uses going on, have to keep them separate. So I'm not in favor of making any changes, but I'm happy to have staff and Parks and Rec go back and look at it, keeping that lesson in mind.
Mr. Grocott?
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think the reason you didn't get any response from council is because nobody wanted to make a motion and look like they were supporting this, and I think that's kind of where we are. I would ask, however, that staff meet with this gentleman here who spoke and has, I think, for three years, things that have been of concern, and let's get those addressed, I think he's right, I've seen the same kind of thing where people pull up into the 20-minute parking, dogs jump out, sometimes two or three dogs will jump out of a SUV, completely out of control, and it can be a problem. So I think this gentleman has some legitimate concerns, and I would like if staff would address those and get together with him.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Johnson?
I'll just add my voice to that, and appreciate the comment, and I know it's hard to police, but I think it's worth doing. I did want to just, I don't disagree, I mean, for me, the general principle is if you're going to have off-leash dog park that's adjacent to other uses, then there should be fencing. I would say, I don't think that a city council meeting is the best place to set the hours for the park, I do recall the conversation, the debate that we had last time, and, you know, it was late at night, and, you know, there's people talking on all sides, and we're trying to cut a compromise and make a decision about what's the best thing for a park, it's not a good environment to do that, I think that Amy and her team should have the authority to work with the dog owners, work with the neighbors, experiment with different hours, if it doesn't work, shift it around, it shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't be a thing that, and particularly, if something isn't working, that it's like, oh, well, we got to wait six months and get it on the city council agenda and go through that whole thing again, it seems unnecessary, so. I don't know if anyone else wants to put in their voice on that as well, but I would prefer to just delegate this to the staff, in terms of the hours at City Hall Park.
I think all of us seem to have the same opinion, I think Mr. Olbert said it, and I guess Mr. Collins did too, you have to have, I think you still have to have separation somehow, I don't know how you do it, but you have to have separation, you just can't have adjacent uses, and I think that, and again, I don't, I want to, you know, thank Amy and her staff and all the folks that came to the meetings and the Parks and Rec Commission, I mean, they've, again, trying to, you know, split the baby and do the best they could for everybody, but I think at least a tenor of these five people up here is that it just isn't going to, let's leave it where it is, and go back into, as Mark said, go back and look at it again, but you have to have, I think, a separation, and again, I agree with Mr. Johnson also, is that I don't know that we need to be discussing hours of, and again, I wouldn't have any, if you want to experiment out, and maybe next week you're going to do this, okay, but I'd keep it all in, you know, sort of a pilot-type thing and see how it works, and monitor how it does work, and if there's some way, I know that's going to be expensive, but it'd be some way to get some sort of usage numbers too, of one of the hours, maybe there's no, maybe between 4:00 and 7:00 o'clock at night, and I'm not saying it is, nobody uses it, you know, or something, I don't know that, I'm sure it's used pretty much most of the day, although when it gets dark in the winter, I doubt it's used very much, but that's another old story, so. Anyway, all right, we're good. Anything, Mr. Collins, you want to make one more comment?
One final comment, I agree with what you're saying, but if we're going to do that, I would like to see that we communicate that to the public, that whatever changes we're making, this is a pilot program, it's a trial program, it's going to be for a defined period of time, a week, two weeks, a month, whatever, and I don't want people thinking that, oh, now we go on and change the rules again, and you have to have another council meeting, or you have to have a Parks and Rec Commission meeting to change it back, so, if we're going to do that, I'd like to see that happen.
Okay, all right, moving on, we're going to move HC to, move it up, so we'll jump to HC. Consideration of adopting resolution awarding a one-time discretionary bonus to eligible employees in the amount of 5% of gross regular earnings for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, and appropriating funds from the general fund unassigned fund balance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Jeff Maltby, city manager, I'll be presenting this item. At your last council meeting, as part of a report to the council on last fiscal year's budget surplus of approximately $7 million, council asked if staff could prepare an item for their consideration of a bonus for city staff members. We had some discussion about putting some parameters around this at the staff level, based on council comments, it seemed like something in the neighborhood of 5% is reasonable, which I agree with, looking at other bonus programs and the previous bonus program that this city had. We also felt that it would be most appropriate, should the council want to grant a bonus, that that bonus be applied to gross regular wages, so that would filter out overtime, or if somebody received a vacation overage payout last year, any of those things, those would be excluded from the calculation. Believe that the bonus should only be awarded to current active employees in good standing, so if somebody worked for us last year, but they've since retired or gone to work someplace else, they wouldn't receive a check in the mail from us saying, "Thanks for last year, and we miss you," and that, so that would not apply.
That means that council members going off wouldn't get a check?
I'm getting to council members, Mr. Mayor.
I know that, I'm just throwing it out there.
I know you do. We believe that you have to be, have a satisfactory, better performance evaluation, and that part-time employees could receive the bonus if they were PERS-eligible last year, so more than 20 hours, and that would really filter out mostly the seasonal part-time employees who work in our recreation programs. In addition, the bonus, we don't believe, should be applied to the city manager, the city attorney, or the city council, that's part of our recommendation. In running the calculations, we believe that the cost of a 5% bonus under these conditions would affect approximately 70 employees of the city, and would cost between $350,000 and $400,000, that would be a one-time calculation. Over the last few weeks, I've gotten a number of questions from council members and members of the public about this particular issue, and so I thought I'd just provide sort of a summary of some of the most relevant points in answering those questions. The city's had eight straight years of budget surpluses, which amount to well over $20 million. Fiscal year '17 and '18, which ended last July, was, in fact, the best financial year the city has experienced with a $7 million budget surplus. Based on council direction at the last meeting, $4.5 million of that surplus was put into the capital projects fund, 1.25 million added to the unfunded liabilities fund, which I believe has a balance currently of about $2 million, and the remainder was put into the unallocated fund balance, which is kind of like a city's checking account balance, which has a current balance of $2.8 million. Of the $7 million surplus, $1.5 million came from salary and benefit savings due to vacancies, attracting and retaining city staff has gotten to be very difficult as unemployment rates remain very low in the region, while housing costs are cited by employees that are leaving us to take jobs elsewhere, as the main reason that they'd like to be closer to home, reduce their commute time, and work in typically a similar profession in another city. Despite being shorthanded throughout the year, city staff last year achieved all their service and program goals, and then some, we continue to break records in all our departments in terms of activity, permits that are being processed, programs that are being provided. As mentioned before, I think this is, in many ways, related to the local economy and just sort of the very robust nature of San Carlos right now, in terms of the activity level of our community. Over the last several years, the council has placed more than $25 million in various reserves, that's approximately 60% of the city's operating budget. The city has set aside $2 million for future community foundation endowment, and has donated more than $200,000 over the last several years to various community organizations and programs. The city council just recently made a $6 million prepayment on its pension liabilities and can make its annual required contributions within long-range revenue and expenditure forecasts. The city set aside in irrevocable trusts $6 million for unfunded liability relating to our long-closed retiree medical benefit program. Between 2008 and 2010, city employees agreed to more than $1.5 million in salary and benefit reductions, which included the previous pay-for-performance program. I limited those savings to just the years of 2008 to 2010, because those were the years that were covered by those salary and benefit resos and MOUs, but you could argue that those savings have continued on to today, but just for the sake of trying to define something from the past, those are the parameters that I used to come up with that number. Any bonus would be considered one-time only. Our legal assessment, in talking with our legal, our personnel legal counsel, is that these bonuses would not be PERS-able. Ultimately, of course, that is, the PERS would, will have to render judgment on that. Regardless of the outcome, for 45% of our staff, they would definitely not be PERS-able, because 45% of our staff are not considered classic members of PERS, they're Pepper, they're newer employees, and the law was very specific that any bonuses for those employees are not PERS-able, so we know the answer to 45% is it's not PERS-able, we believe the answer to the rest is it also would not be PERS-able. However, in our estimates of $350,000 to $400,000, we've included the PERS cost for 55% of our employees, to err on the side of caution for you tonight. That dollar amount within those larger dollars for PERS would be about $25,000, so when I say 350, it could potentially be as low as 325, if it's 400, it could be potentially as low as 375, but 400 would be the ceiling based on that. A bonus of 5% based on the criteria that I've discussed and outlined for you earlier would represent about 5% to 6% of the $7 million surplus, so 94% to 95% would go for various projects and community services, with the 5% to 6% number being paid in a bonus to staff. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have, as you take a look and discuss this particular item.
Thank you, Mr. Maltby. Mr. Olbert?
Oh, you know what, Jeff answered the question I was going to ask.
All right.
Should have called my wife.
That's all right, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clear something up, you said 45% of the employees would not be PERS-able.
Guaranteed not PERS-able, 45% of them, we believe it's 100%, but 45% of our employees are what's referred to as Pepper employees, which means they joined the city after the statewide election, which curtailed public pensions, so they have a lesser pension program, and one of the criteria that was in that law when it was adopted is that any bonuses granted to Pepper employees are very specifically not PERS-able.
So the number you mentioned, 350 to 400, I just want to clarify the fact that you included potential, all potential PERS costs in that, we wouldn't get a surprise from PERS that they'd say, "Oh, well, you need to pay another $50,000," or something.
That's correct, if we have to pay PERS on 55% of the employees, that amount would be $25,000, and we've calculated that into these numbers for you tonight, so that there aren't any surprises in the future.
So this is kind of worst case?
This is maximum case, yes.
How much, coming down to dollars and cents, what does it mean to any particular, the average employee, and I know it's, we've got a discrepancy in salaries, but if you average it out, how much are we talking about per employee? And I assume it's all taxable, right? You're going to take taxes out of it, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, it's all taxable, the average, if you were to run the number on this amount for 70 employees, I believe it's- it's about $5,000.
About $5,000, okay. All right.
Any other questions? Mr. Collins, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. We have some speaker cards. First, John Hoffman. John? Welcome back.
Thank you. I realize that any type of surplus of tax money burns a hole in the public pocket, but I believe it would not be responsible to make a bonus. There are so many other things for which the money is needed, primarily, or first of all, we are tens of millions of dollars underfunded for pensions. And surely, that's one of the things it should go for, if it's going to go for anything. If it doesn't go for that, we've got streets that need mending. I can give you a long list of potholes in streets that need attention. Bonuses are supposed to be for exceptional, not simply for average. Therefore, logically, they do not go to everybody, but to those merit-based people, or merit-based performance, who have done exceptional work above and well beyond. I simply think that providing a bonus, simply because we have a surplus, does not make sense.
Thank you, John. Kara Vonck? Kara?
Thank you, council members. I don't really want to weigh in on the Christmas bonus, I'm sure the employees deserve it. However, I would like to make a comment on the remaining, which is probably more than $6.5 million in surplus, and there are three suggestions I'd like to make for your consideration. The first is, I would like to see the city develop design guidelines for our commercial areas. That would be Laurel Street and the El Camino Real. It's really imperative that we maintain our village atmosphere, and based on a lot of the new renovations that have been going on, that have developed large, flat swaths of glass, started with the pizza place, I never knew how to pronounce it, Paxi, and now we have three more on the right-hand, or west side of Laurel Street, the two hamburger places, and now the new dwell real estate office, oh my God. In any event, if we want to maintain our village atmosphere, we really need to develop some design guidelines for the planning commission to follow. And the Secretary of the Interior has set standards for village-type downtowns, and that usually consists of recessed doorways, and, you know, mass broken up and all of that. I won't go into the details, but that's what the design guidelines would look at. Second, I would like to see the city take control of the Carlos Club sign and restore it. This is a beacon to the public, that they have arrived in San Carlos, and that big black hole there, I mean, even I miss the left-turn lane frequently, coming off of El Camino Real. I'm sure the city can do this easily, with an easement. They can buy an easement of that sign and take control of it. Third, and last, we have a historic resource survey in San Carlos that I worked on personally, as did many other people in the community. It is now 17 years old, and it is recommended that these be updated every five years by the Office of Historic Preservation at the state level. When we did it way back, I think it was finally approved in '91, somewhere around that time, we were limited to 50 properties, and that was under a grant that we got through San Mateo County Historical Association. Anyway, it needs to be updated, and that would be consistent with the city's general plan. We do have a historic preservation element. We don't even have an ordinance, historic preservation ordinance, which is kind of surprising. Anyway, those are my three suggestions, that we could spend probably a drop in the bucket out of this $7 million excess that we have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Andrew Taylor? Andrew, welcome back.
Thank you. Firstly, I kind of questioned the timing on this, would ask council to maybe look at putting this off to another session, because this, coming after the, not many people were aware of it, there were a lot of people away for the Thanksgiving weekend, and I think it debates a wider public discussion. But that said, you know, when you guys, a couple weeks ago, discussed the city council salaries, which was long overdue for an adjustment, part of the argument there was to look at what's going on with other cities in the area, and compare ourselves to our neighbors. Have you looked at, if you look at this, there's not a municipality in the Bay Area that's doing bonuses for city employees. Everybody knows the next recession is coming, and is right around the corner, as I think I wrote to several of you, 2/3 of Wall Street's economists today are projecting a recession in 2020. What are you going to do then? You might be, every city, every public agency has been in the fortunate place of having increasing revenues in the last three to four years after the great recessions. It's money that's just falling out of the sky. We see it at Mid-Penn, I've been in public finance for 25-plus years, and even though the city's done a lot to arrange its finances in the last few years, you look at your unfunded liability, you've got $42 million in unfunded liabilities in the pension plans. The primary one for CalPERS, for the miscellaneous plan, has gone from 15 to 21.4 million just in the last three years. CalPERS, all of these numbers that are today predicated upon the fact that CalPERS is going to return 7% a year, every year, year in, year out. If they don't hit that mark, then pension contributions from the city are going to go up, the unfunded liability is going to go up. And I think, right now, it's just not the place or the time to do it. Most agencies are, when I talk to my boss, it's like, what keeps us up at night? It's CalPERS. And how are we going to finance it? And we're actually one of the better-funded agencies. We have a 30% of our annual revenues are set aside in an unassigned balance, and here you've got a $35 million city, and you've got $2 million. It's absolutely nothing. You guys, I'm sorry, you can pat yourselves on the backs all day long, but the financial situation in the city today is not as strong as you think, and with the next recession coming, it's going to put you in a bad spot. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Yes, ma'am. Just saw a card later for me, would you?
I did.
Okay.
These are really nice shoes, I love these shoes. I could not agree with the previous gentleman more. I spend a lot of my time worrying about unfunded liabilities everywhere. So if that's really the size of our unfunded liabilities, we should be in panic mode, not in giving out bonus mode. So, I had written a letter to the city council members earlier about this issue, looking at fire and cleaning up our canyons, which have not been cleaned up in, forever. And as I said, I walk in Arguelo Canyon every day, it's full of brush, it's full of broom, it's full of dead trees. We do not want to end up like Paradise, which is not Paradise. So, you know, to me, the money should go for things like canyon cleanup, potholes, pensions. It should not go for bonuses, and while I'm at it, it shouldn't go for spending half a million dollars to buy some parking spaces, so.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a follow-up question for Jeff. So, you know, our staff essentially reports to Jeff, who is essentially our chief executive officer, has a strong role in kind of recommending compensation for our employees. You know, I don't know all of the history of past bonus plans and incentive compensation, but I think my general question to you is, if you were to look out and you had more flexibility, would you prefer to have a bonus system, which we don't have today? I mean, do you think that would be a thing that would be good for our staff, good for recruiting and retaining talent, good for sort of the effectiveness of the city staff to be able to execute its mission? What are your thoughts?
I think it depends on the program. I think they can be a powerful tool, particularly now, while you're trying to retain people, to give you a little added incentive to keep them here, as opposed to moving. Typically, in this area, you see them mostly with executive compensation. Pacific has a program that's for all employees, Redwood City has an employee that's for all executive management employees. South San Francisco has a variation, it's kind of a modified program, but it's for all employees. Menlo Park is looking at a program right now. My advice would be not to put it into MOUs, so that you're obligated. One of the difficulties that we had, I know when the city had a program previously, is that it caused some performance evaluations to get very contentious, because there was potential money linked to which box gets checked. This type of approach that the council is considering is more on the macro, as opposed to individual outstanding performance. As Mr. Hoffman pointed out, and I think quite correctly, that is certainly one measure of a program like this. But I think looking at the performance of the city on the macro, in a city that's as small as this, you know, with just a little bit over 70 employees in the whole city, might be a more effective and motivational tool for a bonus program for the council to consider. When you look at the year we've had, how our finances are, all the different metrics and levers that the council is constantly touching base with, in terms of setting those priorities, setting those goals, doing the strategic planning, surveying the community, all those types of things, I think you have a very good handle on when the city's busy. Councilmember Grocott, councilmember Grisilli have a longer view, having had a longer tenure on the council, of when performance was down, and not necessarily because of individual performance being off or bad in any way, but because the economy was slow, and building permits weren't coming in the door, and programs weren't being expanded, and the council was very much curtailing their own desire to expand services because of those dollars and cents. So I think the five of you are very well-positioned to take a look at a bonus program like this and judge the overall performance of the city for the last year. No city employee in the city prior to this would have received a bonus since, I think, 2007, so it's been 11 years since bonuses were granted by the city. The nice thing about bonuses is that they're one-time, and they don't lead to the long-term potential downside of creating millions of dollars of liability. It's a fixed-dollar amount, you know exactly what it is, you spend the money one time, and that's it. Any future expenditure would be considered by the council. And I, quite frankly, think it's very important for the council to be the body that's involved in considering this. For myself, as your city manager, I can say I'm extremely proud of the staff that we have. They work very hard, they're very responsive to the community and their needs, they're a very positive group, who is really focused on not assigning blame or creating turf wars within the community or the organization, but simply trying to solve problems and work with our community. So that's my take.
I had a quick question, and, Mr., city attorney, stop me if I go offline here. It's been mentioned, and I don't want to get the exact numbers, but, you know, it's been implied that certainly we have unfunded liabilities of substantial dollars, and I know we do, every city has it, every organization has it, as was mentioned. But I also know that, as far as I understood, we have a plan. We know our PERS costs are probably going to go up 30% to 50%, I think, in the next few years, and correct me if I'm wrong on that. What, if you could give the short version, if that's allowable, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, give the short version of what our long-range plan is, because it's not like we're not paying attention. I know all of us up here are well-aware of it. So is that appropriate, Mr. City Attorney, to ask that question?
Oh, yeah, sure, that's appropriate.
That's fine, just want to make sure, I don't want to blow anything the last week.
So, the council, for a number of years, has been setting money aside into a reserve, the balance of which currently is $2 million. It was much higher a few months ago, before you made a $6 million prepayment to PERS, which actually had the effect of lowering our annual contribution to PERS by $600,000 a year. However, the council left that money, that $600,000, in the budget, so you're going to be saving that, and I imagine rolling that, or considering any way, rolling that forward into your, any future reserve or pre-funding that you may want to consider for unfunded liabilities. There are a number of cities around us, in this very county, that are struggling with their current and projected PERS payments. We're not one of them. We've been looking at this issue pretty significantly for well over a decade. We were one of the first, if not the first, cities to begin tiering our pension benefits and setting up reserves for unfunded liabilities. And I think it's important to remember that when the unfunded liabilities are calculated, and you look at that number, which will range between 30 and 50 million dollars, depending on how you want to parse it, that number isn't a number that's owed today, it's not unfunded today, it's the amount by which you're going to pay over the next 30 years. It's not unlike a mortgage in that regard. I don't have the money today to pay off my mortgage, that will be paid off in 20 years or 15 years, or whatever it is, but I have the wherewithal to make the payments, to pay my mortgage off. And the city, right now, in all our current projections and long-range projections, has the money to do that, and the council's been proactive in finding ways to ensure that that number for us isn't actually going up in real dollars, it's been, now this year, going down. And that's something that didn't happen overnight. It took a lot of planning on the council and staff's part over many years to find ourselves in this position, and we're quite lucky to be in the position that we're in. And I don't think we should take it for granted in any way, shape, or form, and we should continue to be vigilant in our finances and how we look at this. We talk with the council, once if not twice, specifically about unfunded liabilities every year, and we will, I'm sure, want to continue to do that moving forward, so that it remains on the radar, and the council has the appropriate information to make what they feel like are appropriate financial decisions on behalf of the community moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, what do you want to do on this item?
Well, I would assume you'd probably want a motion.
Well, you can have a motion, and then we can have discussion after the motion, yes.
All right. Why don't we do a motion, and then we can talk. Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt Resolution 2018-.
111.
Resolution, the city council and the city of San Carlos awarding a one-time discretionary bonus to eligible employees in the amount of 5% of gross regular earnings for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, and appropriating funds from the general fund unassigned fund balance.
Is there a second? I'll make a motion, I'll make it a second, so we can discuss it, and we'll see where we're going here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a competing motion.
Sure.
I move to adopt Resolution 2018-111, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, awarding a one-time discretionary bonus to eligible employees in the amount of 5% of gross regular earnings for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, and appropriating funds from the general fund unassigned balance, and to appropriate funds from the general fund unassigned balance, or such other funds as may be needed, in order to provide a aggregate $1 million reduction in community-paid either sewer taxes, or sewer fees, or garbage fees. $1 million reduction in community-paid either sewer taxes or sewer fees or garbage fees.
Okay. There's the motion. Is there a second on that one?
Mr. Mayor, before offering a second, can I just ask Mr. Olbert a question?
Sure.
So, Mark, you're suggesting that we do this plus take an additional amount of money and in a form of a rebate on sewer taxes and that sort of thing?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, before this motion moves forward, I have a concern that the competing motion, the additional part, is not something that's been on our agenda, and it may be something that could be placed on a future agenda, but tonight, the staff report doesn't talk about that. The agenda item doesn't talk about allocating monies other than for the bonus, so I do have a concern about that.
All right. Anyway, the motion is made. Is there a --
Through the chair?
Yes.
Mr. Rubens, since I discussed with you making this motion, I think it was last week, it would have been really helpful if you had mentioned that concern when we spoke.
Anyway, the motion, the competing motion was made. Is there a second to that competing motion? All right, hearing none, no second, that motion dies. So the first motion is now on the table. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a matter of rule, some people might be surprised to hear me say this, but I'm not really in favor of bonuses. I wasn't. I don't think I ever have been, and we never really been in the position to do that until this year. But this was unexpected. It was unprecedented. Mr. City Manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've never had this before. And has any city in the state of California ever had a one-time $7 million bonus that you're aware of? Any city of our size?
Surplus, you mean? It would certainly be rare, right? I can definitely say that for a city our size. Whether or not it's happened before or not, I would have to believe in the last 100 years it's happened somewhere.
It's probably happened somewhere, but not in a town like ours. And I also wouldn't be in favor of it if we were trying to just take money out of general reserves or some budget category or something like that. But let's talk a minute about what we are going to do with $6.5 million, $6.5 million that we didn't know we were going to get. We had no warning of this. We had a feeling, but not really a warning, until a few months ago. So the first thing we're going to do is we're going to add $1.25 million to our unfunded liabilities reserve. This council, as was previously mentioned, has already authorized over $6 million to reduce our unfunded pension liabilities this year. And as also has been previously mentioned, that's $600,000 a year going forward. So that $600,000 basically is one and a half times or more what we're proposing tonight to do on a one-time basis. Second thing we're doing is adding nearly $5 million to infrastructure projects reserve. I got a lot of emails, "Well, why aren't we fixing the roads? Why aren't we fixing the streets? Why aren't we fixing potholes?" I completely agree with everything that people said in the emails. In fact, in some, I wrote back and I said, "I agree. We should do all those things." But the point is, we are doing them, and we have the money to do them. We now have more money to do them. So, you know, streets, sidewalks, parks maintenance, even adding to public safety, all of those things are things that benefit our residents. And the last thing, as previously mentioned, we're adding $1 million to our contingency fund, which we use every year for unforeseen expenditures in good times and bad. That's just prudent for us to do it, because stuff comes up and we need to have the money to do it. The other thing we haven't talked about is what some people refer to as a rainy day fund. If I'm not mistaken, today, it has a balance of over $6 million. I don't know how many cities of our size, and I should probably qualify everything I say, with cities of our size and our population. I don't know how many cities our size are, as in good a shape we are, and have a $6 million balance in their unallocated reserve fund that is specifically set for economic downturns. I think that is responsible fiscal management, and I think it's a credit to everybody who works in San Carlos that we're in this position today. Remember, 94% is what we're proposing to be allocated to all these things. So we're really talking about 5% or less. And I may be the only person here, but I don't think there's anything wrong with providing a belated bonus to employees who took salary and benefit reductions 10 years ago. Many of them can't even afford to live in San Carlos. Some can't even afford to live in San Mateo County. We do live in the most expensive county probably in the country, or one of the most expensive counties. And think about this. If you took that, let's just call it $400,000, because that's the high end. Take that $400,000 and amortize it over 10 years. Well, that's, what, $40,000 a year? And when you divide by 70 employees, that's about $50 a month. Now, if we had said 10 years ago, "We're going to give everybody a $50 a month raise," would anybody have raised an eyebrow? Maybe because, you know, we didn't have, you know, we were in a bad economic downturn, but that's how I look at it. So I just, you know, the point I want to make is that while I understand all the comments, everybody has valid comments, and if we don't do it, we're really in no worse shape. But I believe that the people who work for this city make the city what it is. And I was elected to represent everybody who lives in San Carlos, but I think it's the right thing to do that we show our belated appreciation for the hard work and dedication for the people who work for this city as well as the people who live in this city. Thanks.
Mr. Grocott?
On this topic, we, I'm sure all of you got the same emails that I did, and I didn't get one email that said, "Way to go. Good job. Give a bonus." Every one of them talked about being cautionary. Some people mentioned the things that Andrew mentioned about forecasting a recession. A lot of people mentioned unfunded liabilities. One of the things I haven't heard mentioned is we have unfunded liabilities with, you know, citywide, but we also have a fire department that we used to have that we're dealing with. Every six months, we get a report on what those unfunded pension liabilities are. I just feel like, with respect to the list that Mr. Collins gave about the things that we have, we will be putting money towards, we could simply put more towards those things. I said earlier in the year that one of the things we're suffering from, predominantly because of all the construction going on, is a lot of damage to our infrastructure, our sidewalks, our roads in the downtown area. There's been a lot of damage, and it needs repairing. We should probably wait until all that construction is finished before we go around and repair it, but it does need attention. So I just think there's a lot of things that this money could be spent on, including a rainy day fund. I agree that $2 million is not that much, given the size of our budget and our operating costs. And, you know, part of that is because we, as was noted, we took a big chunk of that that was there and paid it towards unfunded liabilities. And lastly, I just feel like, I feel really, I would feel really uncomfortable voting yes on this, because if there was ever an opportunity to have a quote-unquote "town hall" meeting, this would be it, to say to the whole city, "Look, we've got this. We want to have a special meeting. We want to get ideas like Ms. Vaughn proposed." She had three things. I'm sure if you asked anybody in San Carlos, they'd all come up with something. And so I think that would be the healthy thing to do, is to hold an actual town hall meeting on this and say, "Hey, you know, we've got this extra money we weren't expecting. What do you, as the taxpayers, as the residents, what are your priorities?" Not that council, you know, doesn't make the ultimate decision, but in order to hear from the public, I think that would be a good thing. And the last thing I wanted to say about this is, I was reflecting on this, and I was reflecting back to some time ago, before we approved the Wheeler Plaza project, and I felt really badly that there was an older couple, a Korean couple, that owned a cleaners'. And that was their retirement fund, was to sell their business to somebody else and then, you know, retire. And we took that away from them, and I knew we were taking it away from them. And I brought it up, and I got it agendized, and essentially what we were told, what the city attorney told us, is you can't make a gift of public funds. Well, tell me, what are we doing here but making a gift of public funds? We have contracts with all our employees. They know where they're getting paid. They know, you know, what the deal is. And to come along and offer, on average, $5,000 to each and every one of them, that's a gift. If we were talking about, you know, a $500 holiday bonus or something like that, I wouldn't blink an eye. But $5,000, that's a lot. So there's not any way I can vote for this.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Actually, before I go through the points I wanted to make, may I follow up on something that you pointed out? Because I have to admit, I didn't even think about the issue of gifts of public funds, and I just wanted to ask Mr. Rubens whether or not that is an issue here. Because I know we pay people, so that's not a gift of public funds, but...
Yeah, I think the way this is presented by the city manager for service that was provided in the past is certainly within the purview of your providing additional compensation for that service as a reward. I mean, there's public purpose is certainly the aspect of, all the aspects of employees, the same decision-making process that a private sector employer might employ in doing that, or you figuring out, hey, based on the facts that were presented by the city manager, that the prior pay cuts and other things, and the performance of the city and the performance of the staff on a macro level is an appropriate use of the public funds. So it's not really a gift because you're providing compensation for service that was performed in the past. You're not doing it prospectively, in other words.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate that, although thank you, Matt, for bringing it up, because it still feels a little bit like a gift to me. So, and again, I appreciate that. I didn't even think of it. I had a few points that I wanted to make, and I don't support this measure as it's structured. I would have supported the one that I was proposing, which would have basically put the residents to the fore of sort of compensating or rewarding both staff and the residents for all the hard work they both have done, because staff has done a lot of hard work, but the residents have put up an awful lot too over the last few years with all the development that's been going on. But, you know, that's water under the bridge at this point, although I suppose we could come back and look at it later. Just a couple of points. In general, my experience with incentive compensation programs is certainly there are instances where doing them ad hoc after the fact, when nobody expected them, is, does provide value from an organizational motivation, retention point of view. Everything I was trained in and saw in my private sector career is generally those traits are better and amplified when it's a known program ahead of time, not sort of out of the blue, because the surprise factor actually dilutes the benefit from that point of view, because people didn't know that it was going to be happening. So that's one of the reasons why I'm not terribly pleased about this, although I'd certainly be willing to consider creating some kind of, or resurrecting some kind of incentive compensation program, just done in a more planned fashion. Another point that occurred to me is, Jeff, you had talked about, what was it, 45% of the employees are PEPRA, which means they've joined since 2013? 2013.
2013.
Okay, 2013. That means that that percentage of employees basically were, I mean, they were not subject to the salary reductions that we've talked about. They certainly came into an environment where the city was recovering from that, but I know ever since I've been on the council, we've worked really hard. I've always been pretty insistent on making sure that we look at how we are compensating people relative to market, not only because that's the fair thing to do, but also because if you don't compensate people relative to market, you end up losing people very quickly. And so, you know, it's almost like half of the employee pool that we're talking about, I'm not sure that the argument, that part of the argument that's being made actually even applies. I also think it's worth pointing out that it's certainly true that ultimately one hopes that every dollar that comes into the city that doesn't get paid out to, as compensation in one form or another, does do something to directly benefit the community. But I'd ask everybody to keep in mind that, and I've been talking about this for years now, our reserves have grown dramatically over the last seven or eight years, so rapidly, in fact, that when I first started bringing this up, the council wasn't even aware of how much money they had, okay? And part of that's because of the way we account for it. And we certainly have been doing plenty of things in all that time, but there's a lot of money building up that could be used to improve the quality of life that isn't yet being used to improve the quality of life. And my feeling is that if we're not going to actually sort of announce and pursue what projects we're going after with that, well, then, if we're going to give bonuses out to staff, maybe we should effectively give some kind of bonus out to the residents as well, because that, if nothing else, would benefit them. So those are kind of the basic concerns that I have. I'm happy to, longer run, to talk about incentive compensation programs. They are a valuable tool in almost every organization I'm familiar with, but this one, the way it sort of came up and the way it's sort of handled, and just not, in my opinion, having a fair balance with the direct immediate interest of residents, it's not something that I support.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would start by saying I do appreciate the sentiment. I know, Ron, you suggested this, and it is a very nice thing to suggest, and I appreciate the spirit of it. I think we have outstanding staff. I think the city runs on people. We have great people. I've been an advocate for paying market or sometimes ahead of market, because I think the cost of living is going up a lot, and we benefit and the whole community benefits when we can attract and retain great people. And I think we should continue to do that. However, I think that this particular proposal is a little half-baked. And the reason it troubles me is because, you know, as been pointed out by other folks, there's essentially like two ways in which we typically, organizations do bonuses. One is a specific individual has an outstanding job, you know, does an outstanding job, exceeds expectations, hits all their targets, et cetera, and you compensate them for outstanding performance. Or the organization as a whole exceeds its performance, and then everybody shares in the, you know, in the excess revenue, et cetera. And I think that's what's kind of being proposed here. The problem for me is that we are not a money-making operation. This is not a private business, and we shouldn't say, "Hey, staff, you had a great year because revenue exceeded expenses." We are a service organization, and we judge ourselves based on how much impact we have in the community. So, I mean, I'm totally open to incentive compensation, but if it's on an individual basis, I'm very pleased with we've moved more towards performance-based budgeting and tracking and having metrics. I think it's great if we say, "Hey, a particular employee or group of employees way exceeded their targets for the year. They deserve a bonus. We put that in comp. We budget it, and we have a bonus pool and we pay it out." That would be great. Or if we said, "Hey, the entire organization's Christmas bonus is tied to something like our citizen survey results," or something like that, where we say, "Hey, if the community is very happy with the overall performance of the city in a given year, then everybody gets a bonus." I think that would be fine as well. I just think that the message that we're sending, which is, because the economy is up, because we've made some good choices in investment, then therefore we should compensate everyone, and then, hey, you know, the economy's in a recession, everybody's trying extra hard, but, hey, sorry, there's no bonus for you, because it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. If you were coming back to us and saying, "Hey, the finance department has run this city exceptionally well, and that is shown in the fact that we have this huge surplus," that would make a lot more sense to me. So I think bonuses and changing incentive comp is great. I just think a one-time thing out of the blue tied to just a specific, you know, moment in the economy, it just feels, it contributes to this overall sense of public distrust by a minority of folks about public employees. Public employees are great public servants. They're not the villains that we make them out to be, but I think we do it... make them out to be. But I think we do a disservice to them if we don't, you know, communicate who we're paying, why we're paying, and what it is that they're accomplishing and impacting on behalf of the community, so.
Okay. Well, I disagree. But again, we all come from different places and where we work, and how we did things in our lives. The company that I worked for had bonuses. Whether we had good years or bad years, the people worked very, very hard, and management always tried to figure out ways to give them compensation. However, in bad years, management didn't get any compensation. And that was the way we ran it. We made sure that people who worked hard got rewarded for it. I think this is a concept here that we're, that the city manager is, or this item, rather, is being proposed, is not because it's there, but because of all the hard work that was put in in this past year with some folks that didn't have, should we say, funded positions. I, you know, I, to the comment of having a public meeting, and believe me, it would be an interesting public meeting. You'd probably only have 77 places where folks would want to put the money, but it would still come back to city council. And we're the five people that got elected that are supposed to, you know, should we say, manage it. I just, it just seems to me that we've put money in all these different pots, and this is another pot that I think shows the employees that we value them. If the unemployment rate was 25% in this county, that's one thing, but it's 2% or a little above 2%. Everybody is struggling to find good people. Every week, we get a city council newsletter, and there's always six, it seems, six or seven jobs that we're interviewing for, or that we're replacing, or whatever. And I think this is a situation where I think part of the reason is to try to show folks, hey, if you stick with us, we'll stick with you. And I think this is what we're trying to do, to make sure in the long run, we have a group of people that are doing a fine job. And we have had a group of people doing a fine job. But it sort of shows that our city is willing to compensate folks if we have a situation where we feel that they've done even an extraordinary-type job. So I'm going to be supporting this motion, and I think we should move forward with it. But there we go. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion from the dais? Any other comments? All right. I guess we have to have a roll call, then.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokut?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. Right, the motion fails. All right. Moving on to, going back to 8B, which is consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase agreement to purchase a portion of real property located at 1201-1225 San Carlos Avenue, APN 050132220, in the amount of $500,000, and execute necessary documents to effectuate a word that I've never used before, the purchase, and appropriating $500,000 from the Strategic Property Acquisition Reserve Fund for the purchase. Mr. Seve?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. What I'd like to do is start by orienting you just a little bit before I get into the details of this proposal. And so, let's see. One moment. Thank you. So, let's go back a bit. This, just to orient you again, this is San Carlos, the location that we're talking about is here, San Carlos Avenue. We have Laurel Street. It's in the downtown, in the heart of our downtown. Here's the Wheeler Plaza project along Walnut Street, as you can see here. And here's the sister city alley and the service area that runs behind the buildings, like Wells Fargo and other buildings in this location here. So this blue area represents an area that a number of years ago, when the Wheeler Plaza project was being discussed, there was a discussion about, well, if Wheeler Plaza was to go forward, what would the community want? And one of the things that the community said is they would like more gathering areas in the downtown, like Laurel Park. It used to be called Laurel Park, right? Now it's Frank Harrington Park. But people wanted more gathering spaces in the downtown. So a number of years ago, in conjunction with the Wheeler Plaza development project, and with the knowledge that during the construction process, the city would need parking, the city acquired the old Foodville building, which was located right here along Laurel Street. And the city also owned a driveway that was used to access, for years and years, it was used to access from Laurel Street into the Wheeler Plaza parking lot, as many will recall. The property that the city is interested in acquiring this piece from is located here, at 1201 San Carlos Avenue, at the corner of Laurel Street and San Carlos Avenue. So this is the area, blow-up of the area. And here's San Carlos Avenue again, and Laurel Street. And just as a point of reference, you have Blue Line Pizza, which is located on the corner. So this is that driveway that I spoke about, and there's a driveway curb cut located here at Laurel Street. Again, that was for many years. And Foodville came up just right about to the edge of that, of that area. And as you know, it's used for parking. So if the city was to develop a plaza, which is the intent of the city, a public plaza, park-like area located here, which is the intent of the city now, eventually, this driveway would need to be closed off. Currently, this, the owner of this property at 1201 San Carlos Avenue also owns this, a small sidewalk at the rear of the building, and also five parking spaces that are located here, along this driveway. And the issue is, if we were to build a plaza there, it would create an unusual situation, and maybe even an unsafe situation if the property owner tried to maintain some kind of a vehicular access area along here next to a public plaza. In addition, acquisition of this piece would increase the size of the public plaza area fairly significantly. You're looking at almost 1,500 square feet, which is a little more than the size of some of the smaller homes in some of our well-established neighborhoods in total square footage. So this is the area of acquisition. It's about 15 feet by 99 feet in area. And in terms of the agreement terms, the owner has agreed to allow the city to acquire this property under these terms, purchase price of $500,000. They would like an easement at the rear of the building so that they can hand-truck things in and out of doorways at the rear of the building there. They would like us to construct a trash enclosure for their tenants, because we would be closing that area off at some point with the plaza, and to move the trash into a future commercial space that would be built as part of this plaza development project. And the city had also envisioned some kind of a restaurant or retail space along the plaza to activate that space. And so they would also like, if it is a public plaza next to something like Blue Line, they would like the ability in the future to use it for potentially some cafe seating out on the plaza. The city could consider that. They would like to get a credit for those five parking spaces that they would be losing if they desired to develop the property more in the future. And they would like the right to have first right of refusal if the city doesn't build a plaza there at some point in the future, and that we cover all the closing costs and do the documents for this acquisition. So these are the terms of the agreement. The property owner has signed the agreement. And what we're asking for tonight is for the city council to authorize our city manager to sign the purchase agreement to go ahead and move forward with this acquisition. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Seve. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Al. Nice presentation. You touched on a couple of these, but I'd like you to, for the benefit of the public, perhaps expand on them a little bit. My sense is that if we don't do this transaction, we're going to have a kind of awkward-looking situation, right? I mean, even if cars don't get parked in what is technically car parking spaces, it's not necessarily going to be in the interest of the current property owner to keep those spaces looking nice and consistent with the rest of the park. And we can't force that to happen, right? Because it's their property.
That's correct. Yes.
Would I also be correct in assuming, or that there's actually an improvement of public safety component here, too, in that we're taking away a potential risk factor for interactions between vehicles and people?
Yes, I would agree with that. I mean, let's say the property owner retained that. They could, you know, be having trucks, or even some vehicles, or moving heavy equipment, or, you know, even trash services. So not only, I think, does it create a safety issue, but a very significant aesthetic issue.
Which is probably in practice more significant than the safety one.
Yeah, it could be.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions, Al. I know this is kind of a silly question, but people always ask it. How did we arrive at a half a million-dollar price tag for this property?
Well, the first thing that the city does in any acquisition is we do a property valuation. So we hire a professional appraiser, a licensed appraiser, to do an appraisal of the property. So we have to do that as a public entity. And so that's what we did here. And because commercial land values in our downtown are quite high, this is within the range of the valuation that we had prepared.
Okay. And then the other question was, it's not really defined here in this little blue area, but can I assume that there will be a walkway that will just be a straight line that extends from where that arcade is? I see city driveway. I see the land, but...
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Well, we have a, sort of a defined walkway that people will know that they can just continue to walk down, that there won't be tables set up there, or garbage cans, or whatever?
Well, you know, it kind of depends. However, I think you bring up a really interesting point. We have this arcade here, and that's really a passageway, right? A pedestrian passageway. And currently, people exit the garage, and then you have sort of a crossing here. And so that passageway lines up directly with those, the area that the city is acquiring now. So you could argue that this is just a very, I think, from an urban design standpoint, just a very good continuation of the pedestrian passageway that goes all the way, really from City Hall across the Pacific hacienda building, which the city maintained. You can walk all the way from the dog park, or the library, or City Hall into downtown through these protected and safe passageways. So the acquisition here would maintain that passageway for people. You could have it go all the way through. Now, you may have, someday, you could potentially have a few tables and chairs out there with umbrellas. But I think it would maintain that clear pathway through.
Right. And not that it has to be exactly straight. Maybe if it veered a little bit, because are we going to take out the curb? Or what are we going to do with that? You know, there's that sidewalk there that's above. Is that going to go?
Take it all out.
You know, I think that what we would want it to do is all be level. So the plaza should be all at the same elevation. So it would either be lowered or raised, depending on the design of the plaza. So it would all be even at some point. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item?
I have a question.
Go ahead. Go on, Kara. Maybe we can get an answer for you. Please come up to the microphone.
Thank you. I'm just wondering about the alley that runs behind Wells Fargo. Is there going to be an access or exit point? Because right now, you can enter, you know, the blue area there. You enter, and then you make a left turn, and you drive down to Wells Fargo.
The blue area is going to be completely uncar, no cars there. But there's going to be an entrance. Al, you can explain it off a cherry. And it's going to run the entire length behind Wells Fargo, right? All that.
How do you get out?
In other words, it's going to run, it's really going to be more for trucks than anything else, because I don't think there's an entrance to the parking garage. It's basically for deliveries, and it's going to be out on San Carlos Avenue. It's going to go out on San Carlos Avenue.
Oh, where the little...
Where the little mini, mini, teeny park was, yeah. Right? Right out?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So that little part goes away?
Goes away.
Okay. Thank you.
We're sort of swapping out, hopefully, a bigger plaza off of Laurel Street for the little, small, little alleyway there. Yes. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Go ahead. Please come up.
Mayor, I just have, I get very nervous talking in front of people. But I just have a question, Mr. Seve. Are we taking down the Foodville building?
It's already been taken down years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's kind of all I had to ask, because I was very confused on how you were going to get...
Yeah, the Foodville building disappeared about three years ago. Okay. No problem. Okay. If I don't see any other hands up there, then, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018...
112.
112. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement to purchase a portion of real property located at 1201 to 1225 San Carlos Avenue, APN 050-132-220, in an amount of $500,000, and execute necessary documents to effectuate the purchase, and appropriating $500,000 from the Strategic Property Acquisition Reserve Fund for the purchase.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokut?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. All right.
Mayor, may I add just one little thing I wanted to pass along to Al that came up today in a conversation with somebody. When you get around to looking at designing the parklet, somebody had suggested that it might be nice if we could find ways to make it particularly kid-friendly. So I just passed that along, because it's not something I had heard before.
Thank you. Okay. Item 9, 9A, council member reports on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. The only item I wanted to mention was at the recent CCAG meeting, the City-County Association of Government Meeting, there was an extensive discussion about something that's going to be coming up before the public relatively soon. It's called the Managed Lane Project. It would be adding an additional lane of traffic to 101, going both northbound and southbound, basically from the Redwood City area all the way up to South San Francisco. The way it's currently conceptualized is it would be a lane usable by carpool vehicles, but also, it would be one of those lanes, as is fairly common in Southern California, and a growing popularity in the Bay Area, where you could buy access to it through a transponder-based system. You'd pay to be able to get into a less heavily-trafficked lane. I don't mean to go through all the details on it. I actually was just going to suggest that it may be something that the council might want to have a discussion about at some point in the future, the new council, because it is a fairly significant project. It's basically going to be about a half-billion-dollar project. Probably all funded from funds that are coming elsewhere, not out of local sources, or at least not most of it. But clearly has a lot of impact on many communities up and down the corridor, and we ought to be aware of what's going on, and our community ought to be as well.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, Mr. City Manager, staff comments?
Just two quick ones, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to remind the community that Friday, November 30th, that's this coming Friday, is our Night of Holiday Lights downtown from 5:30 to 8:30. So hopefully, if you're available out there in the community, you'll join us for a good time this Friday. Also, now that we've kind of officially entered the holiday season, again, want to remind the community that we are out in force on enforcing and actively hunting drunk drivers. We did have a DUI accident over the Thanksgiving holiday weekend. Fortunately, there were no injuries, even including the drivers. The jaws of life were deployed. It was a significant accident. Fortunately, it hit an inanimate object, as opposed to another vehicle with occupants or pedestrians in the street. This is not acceptable... This is not acceptable here in San Carlos. We bring in extra law enforcement this time of year, and they're tasked specifically with looking for drunk driving. So we want you to have a good time. We want you to enjoy all your holiday parties. But please do not get behind the wheel if you are intoxicated. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If not, meeting adjourned.